Not wrong.
All right, good evening, how's everybody tonight? Welcome to our November
Third, twenty twenty five council meeting. We call them the meeting to order. As our tradition, either pastors, we have a moment of silence. So let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I was privileged to witness this ceremony in Greensboro back in October, but on October fifteenth, Piedmont Triad Regional Council presented council member Hadley with the Grady Hunter Regional Excellence Award, which honors the late Mr. Grady Hunter, a former delegate for nineteen years. Since two thousand and one, it is recognized longtime commissioner as a P, uh, PTRC board member showing as dedication and service to the region. Council member Hadley has served the PTRC Board of Delegates since April of two thousand and twenty-two. Congratulations, and I believe it's probably the first person in Meven that would be recognized by the, uh, by the cop. So congratulations. Very proud of you. Very nice ceremony, by the way. I don't think you were shocked, weren't you? Yeah. That's why your husband was with you. I figured that out. Well, it's always a pleasure to have Tracy Grazer, our president of Impact Alamance. The Impact Alamance tenth anniversary marks. Impact Alamance does so much for so many in this county, and we certainly appreciate it, and we certainly it's honored to have you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having me. As Mayor said, I'm Tracy Grazer with Impact Alamance, and we are visiting all of our municipal partners and thanking you for your partnership over the past ten years, celebrating ten years of shared impact in Alamance County. So this is our tenth funding anniversary in Alamance. Since we started funding in two thousand and fifteen, we've invested about nineteen million dollars, almost twenty million dollars total in Alamance County. And I had an opportunity to look back at some of the investments and partnership that we've made with the city of Meven, and our investments in Meven total about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the past ten years. And I will say your staff and the team that you have here are incredible. So we are very thankful to be catalysts in the county, but it's really the work that you all do and the vision and the leadership that you have, and that of your staff that allow us to do the work that we're doing in the community. We're thankful to be the seed funding, but they come to us with the great ideas, and it wouldn't happen without them. So looking back at a few of the partnerships that we've had, we've done the City Center Greenway, we have done work with the Holt Street Park improvements there, we funded the Community Center Playground, and many others. I think there are about ten or twelve investments total that we've made in Meven over the past ten years. And one thing that we've done is a thank you to all of our municipal partners for your partnership, is that we had a local artist do this for us, and it has something from each of our municipal partners and the county and ABSS. So we did Kate's Farm for the city of Meven. So that was one of our larger investments with you all, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we did a, an additional investment there. So hopefully you'll be able to look at this and be reminded of the partnership we've had and the partnership that we hope to have in the years to come, and know that that's our commitment is to continue working with you all, and here's to another, hopefully, ten or more years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like we should be thanking you.
One in my office. Thank you, Tracy. All right, it's time for public comments, and we have Mr. Carl Bradley.
This is Carl Bradley, forty-six, ten Meven Rogers Road. The same thing as last month, the lights, I know this morning were not working. The two, the same two lights, the, uh, we still need mulch, and may or may not happen, speed bump, something to slow them down a little bit. They, during the soccer game, some of them come in there awful fast, and we got a lot of kids walking around. And I'm really worried about one of them getting hit, because they're thinking soccer game, they're not thinking traffic. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Carl. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. The first business is approval amendments for October sixth, the final plat reapproval for Potter's Mill, the petition for voluntary contiguous annexation, Dimitri and Olga Feldman, petition for voluntary contiguous annexation, the investment group on Buckhorn Road, fiscal year twenty-six first quarter financial report, DMDC quarterly report, and the DMDC audit report. Any, any council have comments on any of these items?
I move to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
We have a motion, we have a second.
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 We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. All right, public here in the Meven twenty forty-five comprehensive plan, Miss Onby, but has been asked to continue it to December eighth. I need a motion to continue to our December eighth council meeting.
Make motion to continue.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries to continue to December eighth. Number eight, sir.
There was some question as to whether the council would meet again in another work session or follow up specific to the plan. Is there any current plan for that?
No, sir. All right, moving on, Third Street Elevated Stores Tank Lighting. Mr. Kyle Smith, our utilities director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. With the elevated storage tank on Third Street being complete, we decided to go out for, uh, bid proposals for, um, for tank lighting. In order to give us the most project flexibility and cost control, we decided to split the, uh, the project up into two portions, um, one being the logo lighting, and the other portion being the architectural uplighting. Um, we did receive bids, um, for this project ranging from a total of two twenty-one, one eighty-one, thirty-eight, to three hundred thousand. Sanford Electric Contractors were the low bidder on both portions of logo lighting and the architectural uplighting. The logo lighting bid came in at one forty-nine, uh, seven fifty-two, eighty-eight, and the architectural uplighting was seventy-two thousand four twenty-eight fifty. Um, being that this project still has a remaining contingency balance of roughly a hundred and fifty-three thousand, and approximately forty thousand of project credits resulting from change orders, um, underruns. Uh, we recommend, um, pursuing the logo lighting at this time. Um, that is keep us within our current project budget, because we still have some sidewalk that needs to be completed out front, that will take part of that contingency item. So with that, I will open it up. Any questions you may have regarding lighting?
Any questions to the council?
You mentioned being under budget, but there's, we could reallocate that money to something else. There's nothing that, there's no reason why we couldn't, or that money is somehow locked into this project, right?
It is currently under a, um, oh, help me out, yeah. Project.
See, it's capital project ordinance. It is revenue, revenue bond funding. Um, it could be moved, you are correct. It can't be moved until the project is completed and closed out, though, because it is revenue bond funding. And there will be steps, the finance director could speak on it more. There'd be additional steps on that being reallocated. Not that it's impossible, though.
Any other questions?
Yes, would it be helpful also to, I'm just spitballing here, hold off until we do have the funding for everything all at once? Would that be more cost effective, or is this the most, or would it be too distinctly separate? It would be two, just two separate projects. So it's, I mean, there could be some potential savings doing it together, but, um, speaking with the contractors, uh, they were offering these prices, whether we did one or, or either one of them.
Okay, gotcha.
So there was no difference in mobilization for either one.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, I'm a little torn on this. I mean, I want us to do it right, and I think there's benefits to drawing attention to Meven, but I also just want us to make sure we're making wise fiscal choices, and I don't want to make it just solely based on the fact that we're under budget. I want to think about it if, is, if we were considering in the new fiscal year budget, would we still want to do it? That's what I'm wrestling with. I'll have to make my, make up my mind in the next sixty seconds or so.
I, I think lighting the logo at least has some inherent advantages. Uh, I mean, we spend a lot of time, we spend a lot of funding on brick signs and, uh, you're entering Meven signs and, uh, marketing signs as far as directional, directional signs. I don't know that you can, uh, replicate a elevated sign of that magnitude, uh, in any better way. So I'd, I'd like to make to make a motion that we proceed with the logo lighting, uh, and hold off on the, the other lighting, uh, till some future date.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Last quick question. We can see this from the highway just fine when we light it up at night. Shouldn't be any problem. Yeah, I mean, where, where is visible, of course. Yeah.
You can see it from Ruby Tuesday's.
Even from pretty far away. It's across the highway, so I don't know about, uh. You can see, you can see the tank from Church Street and Boring.
Yeah, it's.
This is both sides of the tank as well. So it'd be visible from one nineteen side as well.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Don't go anywhere. The Graham Meven Water Supply Reservoir Study requests for qualifications.
Yes, sir. Uh, the city of Graham experienced, uh, well, not just the city of Graham, Graham and Meven, um, experienced, uh, significant impacts due to tropical storm Chantel at the spillway. Um, those impacts weren't known, um, until the water receded enough to where we could actually get out there and do some ground penetrating radar. Um, but two of the slabs significantly lifted, um, due to the extreme amount of water that was coming over the spillway. Um, that being said, you know, we're worried about potential failures and, you know, what the future looks like for, for the spillway. Um, so we are, um, in conjunction with Graham, Graham's leading on this, but they are, uh, put out an RFQ for proposals for engineering services for design and construction admin of spillway repairs. Uh, those, the RFQ is going to be due back to the city of Graham on November fifth, this Wednesday, where then the city of Meven and Graham will review those requests for proposals and, you know, try to select the best firm for, uh, the repairs. Um, we don't yet know what the total cost is going to be. Um, I, I did have in your, your agenda item, um, estimated ten million dollars, but talking with some of the engineers, we think it may be higher than that now. Um, but we are pursuing FEMA funding and, uh, trying to bridge that gap.
So this would have nothing to do with the actual building itself and the pumps?
This is the spillway itself, yes.
Can you comment on the pumps and the, the equipment and all that side of things, and what the plan is to assess that as well?
Most of that has been repaired at this point. Um, we're looking at different options there as well. Um, there's, we've got to cross a few steps before we can get to that point. We're looking at the legions and things like that down there, what, what all happened to them. But that is being looked at.
I remember an announcement from the governor's office, I think, about funding, emergency funding coming for that. Um, is that, is this part of, of that, or is that funding specifically for the building versus the spillway?
I'm not sure on that one.
I think the state of North Carolina submitted several counties that were impacted by tropical storm Chantel. I believe that's what you're referencing. And the federal government did accept that as a FEMA project. It is not, and no project has been awarded. They accepted the submittal by the state of North Carolina. In the past, FEMA has funded seventy-five percent of projects, and the state of North Carolina has funded twenty-five percent of it. That does not mean it will continue, but even if we get seventy-five percent or sixty-five percent, it's more than, um, zero percent paying it all entirely. So, uh, but we do have a FEMA visit scheduled.
Yes.
This week for Meven and one scheduled for Graham, where these projects will be looked at to determine what funding we get. But funding from FEMA can be quick, or it can be not quick as well, too.
That's very helpful. I was thinking like four steps ahead. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? I'm sure we'll tackle this at budgets in the future, in the near future. All right, no actions required by the city council since staff presented this as an informational item. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Recreation and Parks Advocacy Commission, RPAC appointments for two thousand and twenty-six. Mr. Aaron Davis, Recreation and Parks Director, extraordinary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, thanks for taking the time to look over the appointments to the two thousand and twenty-six, um, RPAC. Um, typically, we have just, uh, two seats to fill this year. Unfortunately, a couple of weeks ago, um, Dr. Cease, um, had to resign from RPAC, which opens up a third seat, uh, for a two-year term. Um, I provided, uh, recommendations in the packet, um, to reappoint Lori Sawyer and, um, new member, um, Josh Garza. Um, and, uh, also, um, we need to fill a third seat, or, um, whoever is at the pleasure of the council.
I, I, sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
It's, it's on this years of service thing again. Uh, we had this question about react. It says that we started out with one and two and three-year terms, staggering to get started, which I thought would mean that every term would be three years after that.
Uh, yes, that, that should be correct. So each year, there would be two seats to fill.
With a three-year term.
That is correct.
So the one for, uh, Dr. Cease would be to, um, fill the remaining two years on her three-year term.
That is correct.
It's not a two-year term.
Correct.
Okay, good. That makes more sense.
I, um, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to appoint Joshua Garza and reappoint lawyer, Lori Sawyer to the RPAC for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight terms, and also to appoint Michelle Scoper, uh, for a two-year term on the RPAC from two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-seven.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I'm, uh, I'm glad to see, uh, it looked like all the appointments on the south side so far. So it's good to get some money from the, uh, Peachtree Road, so.
She's also very involved with, um, Meven on the move.
Great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion for this council to go to closed session, pursue it personnel manager, excuse matter, pursue it to NCGS one forty-three dash thirty-one dot eleven, and a legal claim pursuant to NCGS dot one four-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A.
I make a motion, council go on a closed session to discuss the two matters that the mayor just outlined.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, and we're going to discuss B first, um, and then, so staff can, we'll be back. we'll be back.
I make a motion to return to regular session.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 We made no decision, no vote on B, but we have made a decision on A.
As a result of an early annual review for...
Did I do that right?
Yes. Fragged decisions.
State boys have a touch tough time and stuff like that.
Somebody fixed the clock while we were in there.
Thank you, Aaron. I should have gotten a picture with Tracy. I should have gotten a picture with Tracy.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
I'll try to get those signs. There we go, huh?
It is not.
All right, we have a vote and a thing. We are out of taking a session into close, into regular session.
As a result of the early annual review for City Manager Richard White, we have a strong vote of confidence for him. We would like to pay increase of 2.5% in addition to his COLA effective December 1st, 2025, an additional six month on review. Two. On review, okay, moving to Meven. There we go.
Just to make, just for clarification, the 2.5% is separate from the COLA that was initiated July 1st. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Not an additional COLA, just got COLA that got...
Correct.
From the motion?
You looking for a second?
Sure.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, go back to our screen. We have a lot going on in November and December. November 8th is a special gala, Nutcracker Gala. That is, if you haven't got tickets for that yet, please, please do so. We got the, when's the parade up there? I can't see that far.
First Friday.
December 5th.
Yeah, December 5th. And I want to remind everybody, get your letters to Santa. I think some of you didn't do it last year, obviously. But on November 17th. Any further business to come before the council?
I think something's happening tomorrow.
Aye.
Election day.
Oh yeah, election day.
You want to say anything?
No.
The campaign...
I just want to remind people that it's election day.
Can I give Tom something? All right. Yeah, please get out and vote. And looking forward to the election. If there's not anything else, the meeting is adjourned.